I think that the time has arrived for our meetings. It's 2:01 and I believe that we have all of our council present. I can't see everybody on the same screen, but I think I counted everybody there. One, two, three, four, five, six, and I make seven. So, welcome everyone to our Mesa City Council meeting for April the 14th. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is the reoccurring agenda item we have to get an update on how the public safety departments are coping and responding during this pandemic. Mr. Brady, do you want to kick us off? Or are we going first to Mary?
Yeah, I think we'll just keep, be consistent. We'll hear from our fire chief and then the police chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, could you hear me?
Okay. Mr. Brady, I'm not, we're not able to hear you if you're talking right now.
Okay, we'll go ahead with the meeting. Glenn?
Okay, I think we just heard you there, Mr. Brady.
Okay, yeah, we'll just keep, we'll go be consistent with what we've done in the past. We'll have the fire chief and then the police chief present. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief Camelli?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Brady. Okay, for an update for the fire departments, our members are continuing to be cognizant of what's going on around with COVID. They're very concerned, of course, but continue to do exceptional work out there. And our folks that are getting supplies, they continue to be diligent in getting any kind of supplies that they possibly can, so we stay up on our PPE. So far, we have, our PPE is still solid. We have about a month's supply, at least a month's supply of our N95 masks, although they're telling me that from this point forward, the N95s are going to get more and more difficult to get. They're starting, there's another mask called the KN95. So, we're just reading some information that just came out from the county that they might be allowing those masks as well, because we're not going to be able to get N95s. Because of that, what we're doing is we're going to be issuing the P100 mask. That's the one I showed you a few weeks ago with the cartridges. Those can be used, we're saying the cartridges could last at least three months. So, we're going to be issuing those out as well to kind of conserve on the N95s and they have something to wear that is just as effective. So, we're going to be going with that. We were fortunate enough to get, we had this last week, about 42,000 surgical masks that we were able to receive. And yesterday, a thousand were donated from Titan Solar as well to the fire department. So, we're using these masks for anywhere in the city of the areas that need these masks as well. As we have also this weekend, we were working on these cloth masks for people that are just out and about, not for the police and fire for calls, but for when you're out and about, shopping, things like that. We were fortunate enough to get 500 masks made already just over the weekend that we're starting to distribute. The chamber donated $500. Evit is making several hundred for us. So, we have a lot of folks, family members are making masks. We have a lot of folks coming forward to make these masks for us, which we're very fortunate for. So, as we get these cloth masks, we will also issue them to city employees that are working outside. Right now, we're issuing surgical masks because we do have a lot available, but because those are used in the day you throw them out, once we give them the cloth masks, those are reusable. So, we're pretty solid there for right now. We have seven members in operations that have been sick of this past week. Five of them have been tested and negative to COVID. Two are still pending. And we have been notified of 22 patients that we have transported that were positive to COVID. And we are doing the same thing that we've been doing, is we advise them that they had a positive patient. They continue to take their temperature twice a day, both on and off duty, as we are doing now. So, they are just, as we're saying, first responders, when you, you're just a little more alert to that, they make sure they change their clothes before they go home, so they don't infect their families. But first responders, even when you have COVID patients, you continue to work, as both in the hospital setting and in our setting as well. Our call volume is still down, and as well for the hospitals, what we're noticing when we're bringing patients to the ER, call volume appears down in the ER as well. In fact, crews are saying, people are saying, they don't want to go to the ER if they don't have to go. They don't want to be exposed either, so folks are not as anxious to go if they don't need to go. So, we still see, we're still good on call volume, but we are prepared in the event of a spike. Just so you know, we still have, we have the two-person vehicle ready to go. If our calls start to increase, we could put that in place to help respond on some of these calls if the call volume starts to increase. As well as, we also had a plan, as our members got sick, operations has a plan in place, depending on if 10% of the workforce is sick, 20%, 30%, all the way up to 50% of the workforce, what we're going to do, what our model looks like. So, we already have a plan established there, too. If you look at the chart we have here for the projection chart, I think that's up on the screen. You could see that, so this is very fluid. It changed from last week, we saw it dropped, and now the, because now they've flattened, we flattened the curve. And this data is very fluid, as we mentioned. It looks like our peak day is now April 30th and goes until like the first month of June. This is one, again, one data source. This is also, the White House was using the same source as well. We had our data scientists, both Mark Castleton and Chalae Stedman, look at this as well. They've said, as this data matures and as they continue, it could be valuable information for us. It just gives us a baseline to go with. And so, we continue to look at this one as well. The state just started this week to start identifying COVID calls by zip code. So, if you look at the zip code chart up here on your left, so this is the cases per the state by zip code of positive, people that were testing positive to COVID. And you could see in the zip codes, and what we compared to, what we had our data scientists do is compare call volume. Vice Mayor Freeman asked if we can check call volumes in areas. And so, this shows by zip code, they did it the same way, by zip code call volumes. The green arrows indicate the volume was down from last year at this time. The blue dash is it's equal, and of course, the peach coloring in the zip codes means there's an increase in calls in those zip codes. They included two Gilbert zip codes because of the number of calls we had in these zip codes, and we did have a positive COVID patient in that as well. Something to note, too, though, if a patient doesn't have an address or didn't, they didn't get an address when the patient arrived, they use the location of the hospital to list where the COVID patient was. So, that's why on this map, they also listed where hospitals are located. So, if there's high numbers, they're like in 202, they could have included some patients that they didn't get an address for. If the patient came in unconscious or wasn't able to give that information, they use the hospital location as an address for the COVID patient as well. So, this is data we could monitor, and if there's high volumes in certain areas, you know, pay close attention to. And we'll continue to do that. This just came out a few days ago, so we just had the opportunity to start looking at this data as well. And I think that covers pretty much, we're looking at also, we don't have specific addresses of the positive patients. The county was giving to, giving this to us in the beginning, but they're not giving that information to us any longer. But at least we know we have zip code errors, but not specifics. And that's my update.
Mr. Thompson has a question.
That was going to be my question, chief, was, is the, is the county giving you addresses? Or is that something that you can request from the county so that you guys know where the hotspots are, so that you and PD know where the hotspots are? Because, I mean, I was, I was very surprised when I pulled up the zip codes and started looking at District 6 and noticed that there was roughly 70 to 80 cases just in District 6 alone. That kind of blew my mind. I mean, it was, you know, it tells you it's real and it's here, right here in Mesa. And so, without really knowing where those hotspots are, I would hope that you guys are getting that information so that you know that you're going into a hotspot area where there could be a lot of COVID cases.
Right. Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, thanks for that question. You know, I'm, if Chief Cross is on, he's working on something. Chief Cross, are you there?
Yeah, I'm there. Mayor, Councilman Thompson, I can answer that to, to what's going on behind the scenes with not only the Arizona Police Chiefs Association, but a lot of organizations for police and fire are working with not only the county, but also the state and the governor's office to enhance the ability for them to give us more specific information than just zip codes. So, that's in process. I believe a decision is going to be made here shortly to hopefully give us that information, because you're, you're right, having that specific information would be a safety issue for our firefighters and first responders going to those locations instead of having the zip code alone, which could have, you know, upwards to 100,000 plus people in one zip code. So, we're working on that and we should have, we should have an answer here soon.
Right, well, and I get the HIPAA, you know, the HIPAA laws and so forth, but chief, we were, we were doing this with the opioid crisis, right? We were tracking, maybe not necessarily the actual address, but you know, the nearest cross streets to help us identify those hot zones of where the opioids really were taking a grasp on Mesa. And I would think that we would be able to do something similar, or the county would at least want to provide that information to you guys so that you know where those hotspots are. Thank you.
Yes. And Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, also to add to what you're saying, and that's exactly right, to Chief Cross's point, we were discussing this, with COVID, they say you could be, for 14 days, you'd be quarantined and then you could be pretty considered probably non-infected. But at some point, we would have to eventually take some off or figure out a way to, once they come on the screen as an address, and we couldn't leave them on, you know, for three or four weeks, otherwise the whole, I think we see them all over the city and it might not be valid any longer. So, we'll have to work on that, and that's something Chief Cross and I both talked about as well, so we'll work on that detail. But, yeah, even in neighborhoods would be helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Luna has a question.
Mary, do you think one day it will be possible to, as you look at zip codes, to disaggregate that data and give us the demographics of those individuals that are experiencing COVID and those individuals that are, have died as a result of COVID? Can you, with the county, to try to get that information as well? It'd be nice to know. One of the things that we're doing through the National Cities with our constituency groups is look at communities of colors and COVID has then impacted them. So, we want to make sure that as we move forward, that as a city, we're communicating and we're getting that information so we can work with those communities of color related to COVID.
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, we're not really sure if we can get that information. We can surely ask the county and the state and even the hospitals that they would share that information with us. I'm not sure if it's a patient we did not transport, would they give us that information? But we will surely ask, we'll look into that for you. Thank you.
Question on a similar topic, and I know that the city of Yuma, I think, filed suit against the county seeking to get this information, you know, the specific addresses on behalf of their public safety departments for just the reasons we've been talking about. I don't know, Mr. Smith, are you familiar with that or what the status of that, that litigation is?
Yes, Mayor, Council, yes, I am familiar with that. And City Yuma prevailed at the trial court and did get an order to provide that information, subject to a number of restrictions that were put within that order. And that's also, and I'll let Chief Cross, that's sort of the basis for the conversation with Maricopa County is, is to talk about finding a resolution so that all the municipalities within Maricopa County aren't seeking to file similar lawsuit.
So, as was indicated, I think there's some discussions that are going on right now saying, do we really need to jump through those hoops again? You know, we, as was said, there's some legitimate concerns about individual privacy and medical data, but for the, for the larger good, I think it's already been litigated once and the county and down in Yuma is now disclosing that information. And I think those discussions are happening right now, so that it will be disclosed in Maricopa County as well, hopefully.
Right. Mayor, to that point, they did start, the hospitals have just started notifying us of when we transported a positive patient. They will tell us who the patient is that we've transported. So, if you look at the zip code chart, where we see the number of positives, that's information that we got from the hospitals. They weren't doing it for a while, and they just started doing that about two, maybe 10 days ago to two weeks ago. So, when we transport a patient, they let us know, but other than that, we don't know, like with Chief Cross is trying to do it, specific addresses. But if it's someone we transported, the hospitals are now letting us know.
Okay. Great, thank you. Council, other, other questions for Chief Camelli? Yes, Francisco?
Yeah, real quick, is it part of the discussion also to provide the numbers around testing, given the, the virus, you know, people might not have symptoms or they're asymptomatic or, or they, they want to see if they're, you know, positive, they might get tested. Is that part of the discussions as far as the numbers around testing and how that, that looks like in the zip codes?
So, on the zip codes, we don't know that this is just for the ones that test positive. I couldn't tell you the number overall, but generally, they say 10% of those that are tested are testing positive. Now, that could change, but that's where kind of it stands now. But I think we'll have to look into, when they give us these zip code numbers, how many are tested? And if it is a 10% ratio that tests positive, that will help us to, to tell you how many are actually being tested. Like of our firefighters, we had seven tested so far, two are still pending, but five of them came back negative. So, but we'll, we'll see if we can find that information out for you.
And then in the tests, chief, is it still taking, you know, five, five or seven days? Or is that narrowed as far as the tests?
Mayor, Councilmember Haridi, you know, it's, it's really, it's random. Some come back two days, some come back five days, some come back up to seven days. So, it just depends on where the test is done and where they are, how busy they are. So, it's very sporadic, between two and seven days.
So, counsel, I can, I'm reading off the state website, they don't, the only, they don't give, they can give it by county. I see there's 27,283 tests having taken place in Maricopa County, and the detection rate is about 8%.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Freeman?
Thanks, Mayor, and chief, thank you, both chiefs, for the information you delivered. I guess one of my reasonings for asking about this zip code, and I'm glad this information is out, but then dialing in a specific address, for example, we've read in the news, nursing homes being affected by COVID and patients, you know, dying at nursing homes. And consequently, we have to be on guard for our first responders. If we're responding to an address that we know has multiple COVID patients, you know, the PPE has to be unsurmountable going in there because you never know where it's at. So, I think gathering the addressed information and not so much the HIPAA information, but yet allowing us to be proactive instead of reactive. But I know we're reactive all the time. So, thank you again for the information, and I think dialing it in further, specific addresses for a hotspot like Councilmember Thompson talked about, is critical to our performance and delivering the services and keeping our personnel safe. So, thank you very much.
Chief Cross, I don't think we've, why don't we turn the time over to you?
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Things, the police department are, are up and running smooth. Our calls for service, some of the calls that you would expect, just to give some percentage of the type of calls that go up or at the, the stay-at-home order, is things like noise disturbances. Noise disturbances are up 224% compared to the same time last year. So, I know that's not a big surprise, but it's, it's a pretty decent number just to pass on to Mayor and Council. Along with neighbor disputes, those are up about 85%. And so, the type of calls that you would expect to go up are the, are the ones that, that are going up. Our domestic violence, we're pleased to say, is, is, is really about the same pace and standard deviation as it has been before. So, that's actually trending back down or smoothing out from just a couple of weeks ago, so that's good. We've, our accidents are down for obvious reasons, less vehicles on the road, therefore, the, the accidents are down, so especially in the injury accident category. So, again, that, that, those are all things that, that we're seeing, but our dispatch calls for service are still steady, whether it's a welfare check or, or any sort of the disturbances that I described, subject disturbances, those are all still consistent. It's down a slight percent, but really from year to year, it's, the calls for service coming into our dispatch center are fairly consistent. For our officers, to keep them safe, we've enhanced our, our PPE protocols. Again, as our stockpile has grown and, and things come out from the CDC, we're constantly adjusting our protocols and procedures for the health and wellness of our officers and of course, the public. And so, you'll see officers wearing surgical masks on, on any call that they think they're not going to be able to social distance from whether somebody reporting a crime or, or somebody that they're contacting on, on any sort of case. So, it's, it's gloves, it's glasses, and it's, and it's a mask for them just to keep them safe and keep the public safe. We're using, we're doing some things a little bit outside of the box. We're using a lot of our specialty units. While they, they lie in reserve, they'll be the ones that would come out to patrol if, if we have folks starting to get infected and go down, which knock on wood, we haven't to this point. And those specialty units are now supplementing in a lot of our areas, our violent crime detectives. So, the detectives that investigate, whether it's, you know, armed robbery, a shooting, a stabbing, in any sort of the, the violent Part I crimes that we investigate to, to help them and enhance their ability to investigate and clear those cases. So, each officer has, or each detective has a caseload. And so, we're taking the time to have specialty units reassigned to help lower that caseload on persons' crimes specifically. So, we're still waiting for some data to see how effective that's being, but anecdotally and with some cases that are coming in, we're seeing some, some good arrests and on some cases that normally could have gone cold, but because we reallocated those resources, they, they were able to, to solve the cases. So, that's, that's what we're working on within the community. We're obviously working together with different various community groups. We have officers out delivering food and food boxes to, you know, our elderly communities and, and locations. And so, and of course, we have folks that are involved in Mesa Cares, which is a, a great thing, obviously, the city has going. So, that's, that's my quick wrap-up for the police department, and I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you, chief. Counsel, questions for Chief Cross? All right, thank you, chief. Appreciate the good report. The next item on our agenda, counsel, is to hear a presentation and discuss an update on the Mesa Cares program focusing on an overview of the preliminary community assessment results and key priority needs. Mr. Brady, I know a lot of people have been busy on this before to, to this report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And Mayor and Council, as we reported last week, we were kicking off our Mesa Cares team outreach, and so, we wanted to report back to you on those results and then talk a little bit about the steps going forward. And I want to express again my appreciation to Carrie Kent and Natalie Lewis for leading the charge and helping us really pull together a variety of different employees from a variety of parts of the city to assist in this. And I think you'll, when you see the results, that they're very impressive in our ability to really get a significant amount of input from our community. So, I'll turn the time over to Carrie.
Thank you, Chris. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Glad to be here today to give you an update on our first week since we launched Mesa Cares last, last Monday. So, one of the first things we did is we did a proactive community outreach. We had over 100 staff personally reach out to our Mesa residents, our businesses, our nonprofit organizations to do a three-day sort of assessment on what those, what their initial needs are. As you can see, the numbers we made, we had 14 different departments and staff from, from those made over 3,500 calls. We actually had 2,500 completed surveys, over 70% participation in, in our participants and, and talking to our staff, which is, which is great. To complement that, we actually also sent electronic surveys through Nextdoor and our neighborhood leaders. About an hour ago, I received information that we have another 500 completed surveys, so over 3,000 surveys were completed. Of those, we had about 2,400 individuals, over 200 nonprofit user group organizations, and over 400 businesses participated in the survey. We continue to leave the survey tool open on our Mesa Cares website, as well as our Mesa Cares Resource Call Center continues to take surveys from inbound callers. We do want continuous feedback, just in case some of the priority needs change. For example, we did notice that childcare did not rise to one of the top needs at this point. However, in the coming month, coming couple of months, we'll see if that changes. So, we want to make sure that we continuously seek feedback from our community to see if any priorities do shift. We did ask, our staff asked a few questions of the participants before they, they spoke to them about their greatest needs. So, this just gives you a perspective. We did ask for zip code just to get an idea of where people were responding from. Some people didn't want to provide their zip code, or we had some nonprofits that were actually outside of the city but served our Mesa residents. So, this just gives you an idea of where some of the callers were. Our teams talked about doing some additional outreach by zip code as, as well, based on some of these numbers. We also asked just for demographics on just age, and as you can see, the response age by age group was pretty close to what our Mesa demographic information was from the 2018 census. And then we did ask, where do they obtain their information? We just want to make sure that the information we're, we're putting out is, is making sure that they, that they trust it, that it's in the location where they're actually seeing, want to see it. So, as you can see, we were pleased by that our, our community is going to our websites, going to our social media for information, and they're also going to our local TV stations. And so, I wanted to express our appreciation. Last week, Arizona Family actually broadcasted the Mesa Cares phone number and website for us last Wednesday on their eight, nine, and 10 o'clock show. So, appreciate their help in getting the word out. And as you can see, over 30% of our respondents do get their information from, from local TV news right now. Also, we drilled down just a little bit on social media, just to make sure that where we're putting the information is on a platform where, where they're looking. And as you can see, Facebook is, is pretty popular with our residents as well as some of the others, but we'll continue to push out information via our social channels, especially on Facebook and also on Facebook for Mesa en Espanol also, is where our, our users are looking for information. An update on our call center, as you know, our library staff are manning our phones, the 480-644-CARE from eight to five, seven days a week. We had over 200 calls last week, and it's interesting that we are getting information from our callers to, for information they're looking for, and we're adding to our website. We added actually a couple of new things to our website this week based on information that we're receiving. First, we, there are some concerns about Wi-Fi and internet access. We have individuals that have never had internet services or Wi-Fi, or with the loss of jobs that are happening in the community, there's choices being made on what services they have in the household that they want to cut. And one of those is, is internet services. So, we actually worked with our information technology folks and, and made sure that we broadcasted out our, our Wi-Fi, our Mesa Wi-Fi spots. As you know, our downtown has hotspots as well as our parks and even the parking lots of our libraries. So, we actually put that out on social media to make sure that we ask our, our residents if they know of someone that, who, that do not have internet or Wi-Fi services, to let them know there's these available spots as well. In addition, we have telecommunications providers that are offering very, with either no cost or low cost, internet services. And so, we made sure that that information got on our Mesa Care site as well. In addition, things are happening so quickly, and a lot of services are being moved online. And if you look at information that's needed for unemployment insurance and so forth, it's things like driver's license and, and notary information and birth certificates. And we have added that information online. As you know, last week, Governor Ducey issued an executive order that notary services can be done remotely now, so we made sure that was online. The ADOT has put more services online through Service Arizona. Vital Records is also, you can get a lot of those services online, so we want to make sure that our community is aware of those online services because they'll need some of those documents as they ask for and apply for unemployment insurance. We continued, we had a video that launched last week of our website and our Cares hotline, and that is certainly building over 33,000 views, and, and that's climbing as well as sending people directly to our care sites. We have over 6,000 unique views as well. So, I'll talk about the responses in three categories. We have our in, in three categories. We have our residents, we have our nonprofits, and we have our businesses. So first, I'll talk a little bit about the residents. They really, really appreciated the, the staff who called them. A lot of comments about how professional they, our staff were, how they really felt like they cared about their, their thoughts and, and feedback. So thanks to our staff for that. A lot of concern regarding our residents, regarding their, their neighbors, our first responders and essential workers, as well as our medical personnel, and certainly appreciated all the work that was being done. There is a desire to, to shop local, to buy local, and those that can afford to, to get takeaway service. They're trying to, to do that from their local resident, from their local businesses. There is a concern about their quality of life. We have, as you know, many people are, are home and we have closures of, of so many different facilities and businesses and so forth. So there's a concern, you know, regarding their, their quality of life. They want to ensure that their utilities continue to be provided and to make sure they're, they're not interrupted, whether that be water, sewer, electric, solid waste, natural gas and so forth. And then they also requested that, although they realized that some of our facilities are closed, there was a request that they continue to use social media to provide such programs as, as virtual fitness, arts and library service, and certainly hope that in-person programs return soon. But they also said they would like to see some of those things virtually, if those departments can provide that. So here's some of the things of, of what we've learned. In, for our residents, these are the top areas. There's a concern for access to food. They want to make sure that the groceries continue to be stocked and certainly some, they see some groceries, some shelves are, are empty. And so there's concern regarding that. They want to make sure that there continues to be fresh and, and dry foods. They're also very concerned about our vulnerable populations, especially our kids who rely on their school system for, for food. And so there's a lot of concern in making sure that we continue to feed our most vulnerable, vulnerable in the city. Second, timely emergency medical response and police protection. They want to make sure that our public safety can still respond in a timely manner, not necessarily for COVID issues, but just medical emergencies. And to make sure that police protection is happening. They realize there's a lot of closed businesses that are so forth, that are, that are closed, faith-based organizations that are closed. They want to make sure that there's police protection of those closed facilities as well. You'll see a theme of access to household supply throughout all of our customers. There's a, there's a concern about disinfectants and toilet paper and, and so forth. Access to medication was a concern. And then certainly how they're going to pay rent and utilities. There's definitely a loss of job in the community and there's concern from residents on how they're going to pay their bills. And certainly that was highlighted. And then lastly was mental health and the need for access to online services. As you can see on the Mesa Care site, we've, we've dedicated a whole category to mental health and all of the online services that are available, not only by our nonprofits here in the community that are willing to help online, but also around the state. And we continue to focus and, and on providing that information online. And there's also concern with social isolation. You know, our fire department had a lot of contact with our elderly community. And many of those in our senior living facilities, they're, they can't congregate for meals anymore, so they're in the rooms. And so many of these folks who, who spent quite a, a long time with our, on the phone with some of our, our callers are really longing for that connection with the outside community right now. And then what I have here next is the survey results from our nonprofits. And these are, whether it's our nonprofits, faith-based organizations and user groups. So these seven here is what our, our nonprofits believe are their top clients' needs. Very similar to some of our, our residents regarding there's, they see their clients losing their jobs, they need income assistance and access to food and rent and utilities and so forth. There is a, a desire to, a concern from the nonprofits to support our, our low-income youth, again, a concern regarding meals. And then also distance learning opportunities. They want to make sure that, certainly they realize the, the schools' systems are providing some distance learning opportunities, but if there's anything, whether the city can do or other nonprofit types of organizations that might be able to do some things virtually, whether it be a museum tour and so forth. Some of these kids, certainly their, their school field trips have been canceled. And if there's any opportunity that could fill that gap in doing some things online, they mention that as well. And then these results, the first part that I just mentioned was our nonprofits and what they think their clients need. And then this is what they think, what they need is, is nonprofit, is nonprofits. They see a huge need that's out there. And certainly they're concerned, there's just not enough money that they have to be able to, to continue the, the services. So they are looking for relief funds to ensure they can continue to provide the, the services. They do feel they need some temporary or voluntary labor to assist with some of their programs, because they need the, they know the need is so great. So they do, they are asking for some, some voluntary help that can help them in delivering their programs. You see access, again, to, to cleaning supplies. They want to ensure that they have trusted information they can share with their clients. And then also, the nonprofits mentioned that they, many of them weren't set up for remote, providing services remotely. And so they're working through it, but they're trying to provide those services virtually. But some of them just didn't have the technology in order to, to do that. So they continue to be working on that. And then next is our, our businesses. So we actually had staff from various areas who work with our businesses every day, reach out to our businesses and see what their needs are. And as you can see, immediate relief they need is, is access to, to loans and, and cash. They need rent relief or deferrals and utility payments. Some of these businesses have never applied for loans before, so they don't even know where to start. And they really need help, whether it be from our staff or, or others in walking them, you know, through the, the process. They understand that typically the loan process could take weeks. They need days. They're living day by day for their businesses. And so they really need help from some professionals in this, in this area that could help them. They're also concerned whether or not, we have many businesses that have closed, and they really don't know if they're going to be able to, to open. But those that are open right now are seeking help in, in advertising. And we do have a section on our Mesa Care, Cares page, supporting local businesses. And we're using Visit Mesa's information, the Mesa Chambers information, to promote those businesses that are open. And then same with our businesses. Some of them weren't set up to do remote, to do business remotely. And so they have challenges with technology and internet speeds right now. I also wanted to mention that our economic development staff is, is working with some of our business districts to, to have those discussions on kind of what their, their needs are. And one that transpired last week is in our Asian district. And as, as was reported back to me, that their situation's dire. Many, many restaurants have closed. Some of these folks that, they don't have relationship with banks and lenders. They're concerned they might not be eligible for, for some of the current federal programs. The Asian Chamber of Commerce has, they're trying to promote their business through their website. We actually added this, their, their link to our Mesa K, Mesa Cares page, along with, under the business section, where we have Visit Mesa and the Chamber information to promote those businesses. The Arizona Asian TV website is interested in perhaps a forum for Mesa Cares businesses to do a webinar, to provide some information to those businesses. And then next, they're going to be working in the next week or two with our Falcon Field District and having another exchange of information and see how the city might be able to help them. I also wanted to, to say thank you to our East Valley Chambers of Commerce Alliance. There's eight city and town Chamber of Commerce that have over, together they have 5,000 members. And they conducted two surveys on the 23rd and the 7th, and had over 800 members participate. And very similar themes that were expressed in, in their report is what our, our staff was seeing from our businesses. Unfortunately, springtime is, is their biggest season, whether that be spring training, visitors, spring break and so forth. And so they're really, they're really hurting. Obviously slower sales than, than usual, supply chain disruption, they can't get some of their materials. And then they're certainly asking and seeking help with a reduction or deferment in some of their rent mortgages and utilities. So next step, we should hopefully be receiving some guidance soon. Scott Butler will be here on Thursday to talk a little bit more about the Federal Cares Act and, and where we are at. We're continuing to focus on our, our call center, continuing to get surveys. We actually are working with a number of organizations. Some of our library staff are, are working with groceries and other businesses to get flyers out in, in Windows. We're actually, I've just been informed, we're going to be working and, and giving flyers to the United Food Bank, Bank to pass out on Friday with our Cares hotline number. So we're continuing to get the word out on the program. And then we're also going to be meeting later on today. We, we need to start talking about funding eligibility and, and based on the themes that we received, how can we supplement existing services that are out there in the community being offered by our nonprofit? Or do we need to create new programs that we might need to stand up on our own and city staff be responsible for providing those, those services? So our hope is we get the funding pretty soon, and then we can start distributing these federal funds as quickly as possible and meet the needs of the community, based on the feedback that we receive during these assessments. Now, Chris, I'll turn it back to you if there's anything else before we open it up for feedback.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. So Mayor and Counsel, you can tell, we, in a few short days, we made, had an extraordinary experience of getting so much feedback from our residents and our businesses. And I think it, it helps inform our decisions even better as we prepare for, hopefully for more information about how we, the, the funding we're going to receive and how we can distribute it. We know, we do know that, and you're going to hear this on Thursday, that before we can receive any funding, we will need to provide a cer, a certification by the end of this week, making sure we understand the rules and that we are interested in, in receiving the dollars, which we will do. And we'll talk more about that on Thursday. The challenge we will have, we think the funding will be fairly significant, and, but we're still trying to understand what is eligible to be spent. But all the dollars that we receive will have to be spent by the end of December. That sounds like a long ways out, but when you have this many needs and this many individuals, we're going to have to work really hard to get organized. And so that's why we're starting this week, taking the input that we've just received and begin developing some teams of employees around some of these topics, whether it's food security, whether it's utility payments, if possible, rent and mortgage payments, and determine how we're going to establish eligibility that's consistent with the guidelines from the, from the federal government. So that if, once we roll these programs out, we'll have a list of individuals who might be eligible and that we can make sure that how we spend the money, how we allocate the dollars, how we account for the dollars, will meet the criteria, so that we're not having to pay back the federal government for any of these programs. So we're kind of running and learning at the same time. But hopefully, we can stay ahead of the game. And our goal is to come back to council again this Thursday with more information about guidance we're getting on the stimulus dollars. And then the following week, we're going to come back to you with, hopefully beginning an outline of, based on this input on the needs assessment, the, the programs that are wrapped around the, these different needs and try to come back with some framework of how we're going to do that, as well as describing to you what we understand as the individuals or businesses that might be eligible for this kind of assistance as we get more guidance from the federal government. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Thank you, Carrie. I saw Mr. Thompson's hand up. Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things. For the small businesses, and I brought this up a couple of weeks ago, and I talked about the, the teleconference that we had with, between Middick and, and Senator Senema. But there's the, for the, for the businesses, small businesses with 500 employees or less, there is a program right now through SBE, which is the Paycheck Protection Program. And it is a forgivable, a portion of, of the grant dollars are forgivable if used for, to pay your employees, to pay your salaries, to pay your utilities, to pay your rent or mortgage on your business. And the criteria is pretty, pretty stiff as far as, you know, you can't go, you can't lose employees. I mean, it's really got, it's really geared towards keeping small businesses up and running and keeping their employees employed. And so I would, I would suggest that any small businesses that we reached out to through the Mesa Cares program that are, that are needing dollars or wondering about this, they should be sent to the small business or to a local lender, because a lot of the local lender banks and so forth, they know about the, the SB, the Paycheck Protection Program and can, can help guide the small business through that process. I have gotten also, changing topics. I've gotten a, a couple of emails from folks that were asking if we could open up the, the Red Mountain Wellness Center, so that, or Fitness Center, so that they could get back to working out. And obviously, we're not going to do that as long as the gyms remain closed, you know, statewide. But I was wondering if there would be an opportunity to do a live stream fitness type class for those that are attending the, the, the fitness classes, because I noticed Planet Fitness is doing one for, for everyone. I mean, it's, it's free to the public and they do a workout livestreamed on Facebook at 7:00 PM every night for anybody. You don't have to be a minute. So I was just wondering if, if we could look at doing something like that for those folks that specifically are taking whatever classes there, that are offered at the, at the Red Mountain location. And then switching topics again, and I, I wished Chief Cost was on the phone. I was going to ask if there was, if we've seen, because one of the, one of the, one of the things that was identified was to ensure that we have quick response from our fire and police and that the protection is there. And I, I just wanted to find out about vandalism with the kids being at home, because I, I've seen a, a few posts out there on social media, on Facebook, about cars being spray painted, cars being vandalized and so forth. And I'm sure it's the idle hand syndrome from the kids in the neighborhoods. And so I just wanted to see if there was an up, if, if there's any type of, from, from the PD's perspective, if they're seeing an uptick in calls for vandalism. That's all.
So can I, just a quick question, or sorry, Counselor Thompson, Mayor, you asked about the Red Mountain Fitness Program. I believe on Channel 11, we are, we do have some of those fitness programs, but I will check and see when those are scheduled for. We work with a local fitness group, I'm not sure what their names are, to, they put together some videos. So we were, we were going to be, start streaming those on Channel 11, but I can confirm that. I'll check with the, we can check with the chief on the numbers. I don't remember him talking about those numbers going up too much. I think it was mostly domestic violence and others. But Counsel, while we were, while we've been talking, let me just share this with you. Apparently, Governor Ducey has issued an executive law, order allowing the sharing of coronavirus information in law enforcement. So that just came out while we've been talking. Thank you.
Mayor and Councilmember Thompson, if I could just respond on a few things. Our economic development people and our downtown transformation folks are, are aware of the PPP, Paycheck Protection Program. And so they are very aware of it. It's, actually, it's on our economic development website, which actually feeds into our Mesa Care site. So they're already getting familiar with that program and sharing the information. They started sharing already with some of the, the businesses that they were talking to as well. And will continue to help promote that program as well. And in addition to the fitness programs on, on Channel 11, we are looking at social media and actually putting some programming, recreation programming. And the libraries are doing the same thing in the arts. They're looking at social media to be able to provide some of those programs. But I know our, our Parks Department is looking at creating some videos, fitness videos and so forth, and using their social media channel to be able to provide those types of programming, similar to what other gyms around the city, around the country are, are doing as well to, to keep our, our residents fit. Thank you. Thank you.
I know we've got some other questions, but before, it slips my mind, Kevin, this Thursday, one of the, the digital summit, one of the guests will be Chris and Heidi Powell, who are the, the fitness experts that Chris was referring to earlier. They're the hosts of the NBC, you know, Extreme Light show that also Mesa residents, and they have a, they have an online fitness program that they're doing through Channel 11. But they'll be part of the broadcast on Thursday talking about making that resource available online. Mr. Freeman, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Carrie, this is, what do we have for our library? Do we have any library? I mean, I've received emails about, can our libraries get out any information to anybody?
You mean pro, programming or library cards or?
Well, book, yeah, some of them are looking at books, some are looking at just whatever they can check out. I know, I, I've heard of some cities in the valley that allow some online, online booking of books or, and drive-through and pick them up. I don't know if we're doing anything like that, but.
I know, Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor Freeman, Heather was actually, my, Heather, I watched your broadcast on the, the mayor's show the, the other day. And, and Heather did talk about the, being able to get the whole online resource that we have. If you go on the Mesa Library, our website, there's a whole online section. In some cases, you do need a library card. In fact, you can now get a library card online to check out virtually those, those books and so forth. They as well are looking at providing online services as well, whether that be Storytime. They actually had a conversation today with, with Natalie about looking at doing some, some kind of programming as well. I'm not sure about the drive-through book service. We haven't looked at that. We've really been steering folks towards our, we have an extensive online category, catalog that, that we subscribe to. And so those folks that are looking to virtually check out books can, can do so online. So we can certainly get more information out on our social media channels and so forth on, on how to do that.
Yeah, I think that goes back to our respective Facebook on our council that we can promote that there are alternate ways, because I know we've repositioned some of our librarians, you know, with the Mesa Cares Program. So the staffy might not be there, but if we can look at alternative methods to deliver some library information, that'd be great. And I do remember Heather's discussion on that, so I'll review that as well. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Freeman, this is Natalie Lewis. Just to add a little bit to your, to your question too, Carrie's right on. We are doing a lot of different things, including the online library cards. They're also creating mini lessons, how-to videos, and they are posting a minimum of one virtual Storytime every week. They do plan to do more. And Arts and Culture has also done a large variety of different online programs that I could go into if you, if you'd like me to.
We can catch up later. I can talk to you personally on that. Thank you.
Natalie, I, I would like to hear that, unless maybe not right now, but I think for a future, you know, very soon, I think we're all anxious to hear what is available. I mean, we're talking a lot about our closed facilities, our closed programs, but I think we need to be talking as much or more about what's not closed and what's available online. I mean, whether it's through the, I know the, the libraries, the museums, the parks and, everybody is, is still very active to the extent they can be online. And it's, there's, I'm not, I'm not sure that the public says aware of those resources as we would like them to be. So why don't you give us the highlights right now?
Okay. I'd be glad to. Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of the things that Arts and Culture has started, they have a program that's called the Collective Leadership Training, and they're continuing to do that training program online through Zoom. Project Lit, which is, it uses poetry and spoken word and hip-hop to promote literacy and social emotional learning for our youth and young adults. They're continuing to host weekly open mics live. Our Creative Catalyst Group continues to meet online. They are launching two projects in the next week. One of them is called Creating Alone Together, which is encouraging individuals to create online projects and then share them through hashtags and other ways. The staff has also put together a new, they call it Mabel, and it's, it's about herb site art pick, pickup, where you can purchase a bag of art. And then our, our staff is doing classes online. We've posted some videos online, DIY with families from home, you know, all geared towards helping parents and families learn together. We are starting a podcast project. And the studios are putting out some teaser videos, because they're going to be launching some studio programs online in the next few weeks. We have Wordplay Cafe. They're going to be launching a monthly online in May. And then the museums are doing lots of different projects, crafts, even yoga for children. So there's lots of things that are happening, both at the library and at Arts and Culture. We took the council's comments very seriously. We know people are struggling, you know, being in isolation, and we want to try to help people connect as much as we can.
Thank you. And I know Heather mentioned last week that the City of Mesa online book inventory is the largest in the state. So there, and I got a, a great email from the library just a day or two ago with some, some great children's books and the read-along Storytime program. So I hope people are, are looking into those programs. Council, other, other questions related to this presentation? Jen, yeah, Jen?
I just wanted to clarify for the businesses and for our understanding as well, that the Mesa Cares Program, those dollars that we will be receiving from the federal government will be going to our nonprofits and those efforts and not to our businesses. Although we care about our businesses and we're a resources for the businesses, but there is no funding that will be allocated through us for the businesses. Is that correct? That's my understanding, and I just wanted to clarify for any businesses who are concerned.
So Mayor, Councilmember Duff, no, I, I think that the intention is that the funding that we will receive will be for individuals, nonprofits, businesses, anyone or any entity in Mesa that had, can demonstrate they've been impacted by COVID. We're going to, we're trying to develop the programs to assist them. So if it's a small business or any business, well, you know, Mesa local business that is having a difficulty tying, for example, paying their utility bills, that we believe that this program or these dollars would be available to assist them. And any other variety of assistance, we still have to get the specific guidelines, but there's nothing that we've read that would suggest they would be exempt from assistance. Matter of fact, we believe that most of the dollars that we'll be able to distribute will not be able to, well, some of them will go through nonprofits, but much of it will probably be a direct assistance from the city to businesses and residents.
Okay. So we don't, aren't relying completely on the SBA and financial institutions, banking institutions for, I, I know that that's going on, but that'll be additional assistance to the city that, or will it be this, it's not the same program, right?
No, that's, thank you, Councilwoman Duff. Yeah, there, I would see that. We would, we would encourage businesses to make sure they're going through that process and accessing those dollars. And then what we're imagining is that we can supplement that specifically with, again, with utilities or something that, other costs that may not be covered by their payroll, the payroll stimulus or other expenses that may be covered by the SBA. So we're, we're going to be careful. We want to adjust that, but we think one of the obvious, one of the easiest areas that we could assist with is, one, helping with utilities, not only city utilities, but we're in conversations with Southwest Gas and SRP to see how we could coordinate any assistance that we might be able to help recover cost or alleviate some of the costs of those small businesses. So everything is, at, to that point, again, is on the table until we read the guidelines and find out they wouldn't be eligible for it. But at this point, we're going in with the attitude, we're going to try to do as much as we can for businesses.
Well, thank you for clarifying, Matt. I didn't realize that we were providing some assistance, so that's good to know. Thank you.
You know, I, I want to thank Mr. Brady and Ms. Kent and everyone who's been involved in, that, we really have been, a lot of work that's been done literally in a matter of a few days. I mean, and the response rate and the amount of data that was collected here is really very impressive. So I want to say, give you an attaboy, and, and that's a great job. You've moved very fast. My impression is though, I, I, I think we need to keep the pedal down. I mean, we, we can't slow down at all. It's great that we've been able to collect this data as quickly as we can, but I still feel a, a great sense of urgency to, to engage and to provide service, you know, what services we can at this point. And I think we need to take this information very quickly and, and turn it into a strategic plan for how we're going to, you know, not just wait for the federal money to show up, but we're going to start implementing, I mean, and we already have started implementing, you know, a strategic plan to respond to some of these needs that have been identified during this process. And I don't think we need to wait, you know, a lot of the things that we need to do are not contingent on the receipt of the federal care dollars before we can respond to them. So I think Carrie's presentation, you know, broke it down into three groups, you know, people, nonprofits, and businesses. And as I understood the presentation, it seemed like people's primary concerns were for their basic needs. I mean, they were talking about food and utilities and, and rent, you know, very basic services. And I think we've already done a good job of responding to, to some of those things. The, the work that the city's done to facilitate food distribution, working with the school district on food distribution, I commend all that. I think that the, the basic, you know, food security needs of our community, we've, we've been, played a good role in providing, in responding to that. The same, I think, is, is going to be true for rent and for utilities. This council has already established a rental, I mean, a, a utility assistance fund. And I think, you know, we need to go ahead and, and spend that money in anticipation that it's going to be replenished and then some with the care dollars. But I think that, that program's already in place and we don't need to wait for anything to, to fully implement that and to encourage people, if they are experiencing hard times, particularly related to COVID, to take advantage of that program. And if we spend, you know, that hundred, $100,000 a lot quicker than we had anticipated, that's okay, because I think, I, I, I think we're going to be able to replenish that with the federal money it's, before too long. The rent program, the rental assistance program, I think we need to, we, we've talked about how federal money is likely on the way. I know that the, the priority of this council is to try to avoid people going into homelessness rather than wait for months or years and try to rescue them and bring them out of homelessness. So the more, the, the quicker we can bring online a rental assistance program in anticipation of this federal money coming, or at least have it all figured out so that when the federal money arrives here, we can immediately start issuing city rental vouchers. I think that's got to be part of our strategic plan. The other issue that seemed to be on the minds of people had to do with, with the mental health issues. And so I appreciate the, the conversation we've had already, talking about what the library's doing, what some of these coping skills are that, that we can provide through our quality of life programs. We're going to be talking more about that on Thursday, but I think that's got to be an important part of our strategic plan going forward. When Carrie was talking about nonprofits, my, my impression, Carrie, was that one of their chief concerns was, was manpower. You know, they, they need to gear up and actually be able to go out to the homes of, shuttered-in seniors and, you know, figure out ways to, to, to provide services on a very, you know, one-on-one basis. And I think, Mr. Brady, we've, we've talked earlier today about, you know, we've got some city employees that, that need something to do, right? I mean, when, when some of these facilities are, are being shuttered, we might have, be able to offer up some manpower and shift it from city facilities over to what the, the needs of the community are right now, which are the, being addressed by the nonprofits. So I, I see a role for the city to play responding to that need as well by perhaps offering, loaning some city employees to some of these nonprofits during this particular time of need. The third area, businesses, I, I know that Carrie and others have mentioned that our Economic Development Office has done a good job of compiling the information on the SBA loans and the PPP loans. We've got, they've done a good job of, of creating a great document that I think ought to be in the hands of every small business, large and small business in the city. So I would just encourage our Economic Development Office in the city and all of us on, on the council, doing a better job of pushing out that information. I think there's a lot, there's some frustrated small business people that, that think that this is such a complicated, you know, web to try to negotiate. How do I apply for these loans? Where do I go? What website do I go to? What information do I need to have to respond to these questions? We've already figured all that out. With the, the, the Economic Development Office has done a good job of compiling that information. I think all of us just need to be pushing that out as hard as we can so that the small businesses in our community know that this is not, you know, something that, that they can't figure out, that, that we're here to help them and provide that information to them. So again, that's my, my take on this, Mr. Brady, is congratulations, this is a great job of getting all this information put together, but we can't, you know, and I know this isn't your plan, but we, we can't wait to have a plan. We need to just, you know, build this airplane, figure out how to build this airplane while we're flying it.
Yep.
And start providing all of these services that we know we have to provide and not wait for the federal money to arrive.
Well, thank you, Mayor. The federal, we expect the federal money to be here fairly soon. I think what's helpful is we are talking even this afternoon about creating the opportunity to, now that we've contacted our community, is also now to give them the opportunity to give us more specifics and details about what their specific needs are. And, and also to make sure that they understand at some point, we're going to have to demonstrate or have to have something that evidences an impact from COVID, whether it's the loss of a job or loss of time working or whatever it might be. So we're going to have to make that connection, so we're trying to figure out how to document that. The good news on utilities, individuals that can't pay their utilities right now aren't being shut off. So we will, there is time for us to communicate with them that you're not going to, your utilities aren't being cut off, whether it's Mesa, SRP, Southwest Gas, and it'll give us time to work with them. The eligible expenses are for, I think, March 27th through the end of December. So we'll be able to work with both businesses and residents, we believe, to begin understanding the magnitude of those dollars and what they look like and how we can, we are literally going to have to take dollars from the direct deposit and pay them from that, those dollars. So that's something we're looking at being able to do. On the labor side, Mayor, for nonprofits, you were on a call earlier today where I offered labor to the school district to assist, and especially because their hours are fairly, it's not a full-time hourly request that they need, they need some part-time. And I told them that fits perfectly with the individuals that we have that will be available. So we're working, and I've offered it up to a variety of nonprofits, that if you're having a hard time getting volunteers to show up and you want someone who's going to be there as their job, we, we have, we have opportunities, we have individuals who we'd like to assign to that. Our goal is to try to assign as many of the individuals first that have been identified in the reduction in workforce and give them the opportunity to take on these other assignments. So we've put out those offers to a variety of nonprofits already. On the small business assistance, Mayor, you talked about how well economic development has done providing the information and putting that out there. That's good, but that's not good enough. We are asking our economic development staff to literally call businesses and ask, how can I be with you and walk you through the process? So we don't just say, hey, here's a great website, go read it, hope you can figure it out. Our goal is to actually walk them through and be, help them connect with bankers, help them connect with the resources, the forms. We're trying to build up the capacity within our staff so that we can become, I don't know if experts, but we become competent enough that we can handhold a business through the process, as opposed to just pointing them to a website. We're offering to be able to walk them through and try to troubleshoot any concerns they have. So that's, you're right, that's, we've got to figure out how to keep moving quickly. right, that's, we've got to figure out how to keep moving quickly. We hope by next week, when we come back to council, we'll do almost what you just did today, Mayor, is kind of define these categories that we're going to focus on first, once we identify the funding that comes to us, and then figure out how we can disperse those monies and be consistent with the intentions of the federal government so we're not subject to a repayment. So we were, we're moving forward and we're making, trying to make sure we help individuals as quickly as we can.
Mayor and, and the rest of the city council, as you can hear, Mr. Brady's gas pedal is down and accelerating quickly. Natalie and I are trying to keep up, and the rest of the organization is, is moving with us quickly. We are implementing things in, in days, major programs in, in days. And we're going to continue to do that. The need out there is great, the need is now, and so we are moving very quickly. And if I could have Glenn or Steve put the, the PowerPoint up, we do have services that are available today, although we're going to be adding to, to some of the services. Our, I want to mention our CARE hotline again, 480-644-CARE. Our website, mesaz.gov/mesacares. There are a number of services that we're providing today. And you mentioned, Mayor, the utility assistance program. And so we are connecting, our librarians are connecting those residents and businesses that contact us. So whether you're a nonprofit, a resident, a business, please call us, and we'll make sure that we can connect you to the right city staff, the right nonprofit, and start providing some available services that we have today. And then we'll continue to add to that when we come back to you next week, talking about some of the programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thompson?
Chris, talking, going back to economic development and, and working with the business community, are we looking to add some of those folks, some of the folks over to economic development to help with that? Because I know that's a daunting task. I mean, I started building a database of businesses in District 6 to be able to send out the survey monkey that economic development had, so that I could literally reach out and touch the business community. And I tell you, it was overwhelming. It took me, after about four days, I almost gave up because I had over 110 businesses that I was trying to reach out to. And I know that with everything else that economic development has going on, because we haven't really shut down, we still see projects coming in and out, I just want to make sure that they're staffed accordingly so that they can be making these phone calls and outreach to, to the business community to help walk them through or handhold where, where, where it's applicable.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Councilman. We are fully engaged with all the economic development staff. We've assisted them on connecting with other businesses that they don't have the resources to get to. But we'll keep working with them, making sure, like you said, if, if everybody is completely occupied and we need more assistance, we have individuals we can pull over. It just helps to have the familiarity with the business world and the community and small businesses, which many of our staff do in economic development, so they're a familiar name. But certainly if we need additional staff to redirect over there, we can easily do that.
Thank you, Counsel. Other questions on this agenda item? Okay, well, thanks again. I mean, I, I have appreciated being included in some of what staff has been working on these past few days. And I, I know that the pedal is to the metal. There's a lot that's going on, and I just don't want to leave the impression to anyone that we're waiting, kind of twiddling our thumbs, waiting for the federal government to show up and solve our problems. I think that's far from what's happening in this community. So kudos to Mr. Brady and his staff for hitting the ground running. And I think, again, that in my mind, the challenge here is just getting all this information out to the public so that the small businesses and the folks that are sitting home with kids frustrated because they don't, you know, are looking for resources, and everybody who's struggling in their own way at this time, you know, there's, there's resources available through the City of Mesa. So maybe this 644-CARE number and others are things we just really need to shout from the rooftops so people can, can, you know, realize that we've got resources to share with them.
Mayor, and everything we've talked about today, the, whether it's online library, online museums, what they're having, they're all, they're all there right now under, you can find them today, and residents are finding them. So we encourage the council to become familiar with them because they're out there, they're online right now. They're, anything that comes up where we're providing alternative programming, it gets posted on that site. So I think the challenge is, is now it's grown to be so large, sometimes it's probably to navigate, to find everything, but it's, it's out there and we just, we'll just keep, I think the more we keep talking about it, talking about it, will help get the word out.
Great, thank you. If there's nothing else on this topic, the next item on our agenda is scheduling of meetings. If you don't mind, I'm going to talk just a little bit about, if you can indulge me, what we're going to talk about Thursday at the summit meeting. We've had some great topics so far, including small business and education. This Thursday, 1:00 PM on Facebook Live, we'll be talking about Inspire Mesa. I know this is a program that the council is very familiar with. Inspire Mesa is a campaign designed to uplift residents and shine a light on the positive things happening in our community. It's also a place where residents can go online to find ways to stay mentally, physically, and emotionally healthy during the pandemic. So this Thursday, we're going to be hearing from three experts on these topics. The first is Dr. Terry Pike. She is the ASU Chief, Chief Well-Being Officer, representing the ASU Center for Mindfulness, Compassion, and Resilience. I think we've heard earlier about the, the mental health and emotional health challenges that people are experiencing with this isolation. So she's going to give us some, some good advice on that and on those topics. Also, we talked about this earlier, Chris Powell, I think Chris and Heidi Powell are national celebrities that live here in Mesa. He and his wife are personal trainers who developed the Transform app and hosted TV's Extreme Weight Loss Show. They'll be talking about what resources are, they're making available through Channel 11 to respond to the physical health needs of our community. And then finally, this is a fun story, I think we've all, some of us are familiar with, Matt Ferris is a musician who started hashtag Corona Caroling in Mesa neighborhoods using the Inspire Mesa hashtag. I think we all need to look for, you know, impromptu fun things to do. So it's just a nice story that we'll be sharing on Thursday as well. So please help, help me get the word in, out to tune in on Facebook or use the link, mesaz.gov/communitysummit this Thursday at 1:00, so we can continue to kind of dive deeper into some of these topics that we've talked about. Mr. Brady, what other meetings are we looking at?
As you said, Mayor, we'll look forward to seeing everyone Thursday morning for study seven at 7:30 in the morning. Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, Counsel, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. We'll do this by unanimous consent. All in favor of adjourned in the meeting, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.